Good evening, and thank you for viewing the June 3 meeting of the Arcata City Council. As you know, the city council meeting is being held as a teleconference in response to local efforts to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus. We again want to thank the community for their efforts to slow the spread of COVID-19 in Arcata. As the community begins a slow reopening, it will be important for all of us to be attentive and committed to masking in public places, practicing our new social distancing skills and maintaining high disinfection practices. All of us tonight will be taken through a roll call. Public comment was accepted by email and in writing for both specific agenda items and general comments. Comments on specific items will be read by staff during that agenda item. You can email public comments to PC@cityofarcata.org now if you want them to be read and be recorded as part of this meeting. I will start with the flag salute, and please join me if you so choose. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I also would like to have a moment of silence for the the murder of George Floyd, who, as you all know, was murdered in Minnesota this past week. So please join me for a moment of silence. And then also, it is the pleasure of the council. I would like to adjourn the meeting at the end of the meeting in honor of George Floyd. Next will be a roll call. So could our city clerk please do a roll call of the members of the council?
Mayor Winkler.
Here.
Vice Mayor Patino.
Here.
Councilmember Pereira.
Here.
Councilmember Watson.
Here.
All present.
Our next is ceremonial matters. We have two proclamations tonight that I will read myself as mayor, and these will be forwarded to the respective organizations. The first is a proclamation in honor of World Ocean's Day, June 8, 2020. Whereas the ocean provides one half of the oxygen we breathe, regulates our climate, and provides us with food, water, and economic support. World Ocean's Day is an annual opportunity to honor the world's oceans by building awareness of the crucial role the ocean plays in our lives. And whereas the people of Humboldt County can help protect our ocean's future by partnering and volunteering with local schools and organizations such as Humboldt Bay Heaper, Humboldt Surf Rider, the North Coast Environmental Center, and Friends of the Arcade March. And whereas the City of Arcata's Environmental Services Department also organizes opportunities year round to help clean our creeks and improve watershed health by helping keep trash from entering Humboldt Bay, thus reducing the impact of marine debris on ocean ecosystems. Now therefore be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby recognizes Monday, June 8, 2020, to be World Ocean's Day in Arcata, and encourages the community to participate in coastal and watershed updates throughout the year. Due to today, June 3, 2020, and signed by myself as mayor. Second proclamation is of National Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, June 2020. Whereas there are 5.8 million Americans living with Alzheimer's dementia today, a figure that is expected to grow to as many as 16 million by mid-century if scientists do not develop a cure or effective treatment. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is a local issue, our friends and neighbors need access to support services and resources to lessen the disease's impacts. In Humboldt County, it is estimated that about 2,500 people currently live with Alzheimer's and related dementias. About 6,600 local residents care for a loved one with Alzheimer's. And whereas the Humboldt Senior Resource Center and Adult Daycare of Mad River provide therapeutic day treatment services to the region's individuals with dementia, as well as information and resources through adult day health and Alzheimer's services in Eureka. Now therefore be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Arcata, recognizing June 2020 as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. The council thanks the Humboldt Senior Resources Center, Adult Daycare of Mad River, Redwood Caregiver Resources Center, and the Alzheimer's Association for providing services to people and families coping with dementia. Due to today, June 3, 2020, and signed by myself as mayor. Right, next is a report by commissions and committees. Tonight, we will have the annual report from the Forest Management Committee, which will be provided by Dennis Halligan.
Hi all. Thank you for having me. I appreciate this annual opportunity, actually semi annual, I guess we do it a couple of times a year, to provide a report to the city council. And so I know everyone's valuable, so I guess I'll just jump right on in. Basically, you know, as you know, and for those who are listening who don't know, the Forest Management Committee is a volunteer committee made up by local experts that help inform the city on how and help them make decisions regarding the management of the community forest, Jacoby Creek Forest, and the Sunny Brae Forest. And so for me, it is a very interesting voluntary experience, and I really, really enjoy it. And I use the forest quite a bit, just walking around and hiking and things like that. So I really appreciate it. So in general, what's been happening is in 2019, a timber harvest was completed, and 370,000 board feet were harvested. Predominantly, 95% was redwood, and Dougford and Grandford made up about 5% for a value of about $312,500 to the city. And about 4,000 conifer seedlings were planted in the harvested areas by the city's natural resources crew. And which likely well exceeds the number of trees that were actually harvested. And also, in 2019, the city delivered 9,356 metric tons of forest carbon. These are climate reserve tons to various buyers for a value of about $58,000. And that ranges, you know, anywhere from $9 to $17 a ton, depending upon, you know, how many tons somebody buys. And, you know, that tonnage goes to public utilities, commercial enterprises, and private citizens. And I buy, you know, 10 to 20 tons every year for Christmas presents to help offset, you know, my entire extended family's use during the Christmas season and also throughout the year. Three grants were secured for the Swainer Limited Partnership. 114 acres that was added to the Jacoby Creek Forest. Escrow is expected to close at the end of June or July. And it's a great addition to the Jacoby Creek Forest because it shares about a mile and a half of boundary line with the existing Jacoby Creek Forest. Also, $2,000 were received in local cash contributions to apply for trail forest maintenance and forest expansion efforts. The committee reviewed a commercial cannabis permit adjacent to the Jacoby Creek Forest and made a recommendation to the city regarding setbacks from the public forest boundary. The required climate reserve six-year site visit and forest carbon inventory verification was successfully completed, and the city passed. Ruby Canyon Engineering conducted the exhaustive audit, and I'll tell you, it was exhaustive. You should see the spreadsheets that went with that. I mean, it just made your eyes glaze over. And so they completed the audit and the field carbon verification. Forest growth model projections from 12 years ago fell within the required 5% tolerances. And the project documents are available on the Climate Reserve website for review. The committee discussed and recommended approval of the parks' open space and trails ballot measure. The city purchased 83 acres from Matt Emerson and added it to the Jacoby Creek Forest, and city staff have located all the property corners and markers, and will commence a timber inventory in July and August of this year. And if you remember, this purchase was part of the larger Sierra Pacific purchase, which included 884 acres that were dated to HSU. The committee continued work on the forest management plan update. The draft plan is finished. The sequoia mitigated neck deck is finished, and staff and committee are expected to finally bring this to council this summer, now that the Swainer addition can be brought into the forest management plan. The FMC recommended to the city council that existing cogeneration and biomass energy facilities in Humboldt County are an important part of the energy generation mix and are important components in the city's community-based forest management. Park signs in the community forest have been added to the Forsyth parcel, so people can now know where they are instead of wondering. And also, public use during the COVID-19 period has been very high. And like I said, I go up there too, and I was just up there last weekend. For research and monitoring, the staff continues to monitor Pacific fisher locations, and they're now in all of the forest tracts, including the new Forsyth parcel.
We'll give Dennis Halligan just a second to unfreeze. He did indicate earlier that his internet was a little bit spotty. So we'll stall here for just a second to see if he comes back on. If not, then we can move on.
Audit acquired Lima 20-acre parcel. Staff conducted pre-field research, record search, and survey for archaeology resources on the Lima and Forsyth parcel for the NTMP amendment. And now we move on to roads, trails, watershed, and vegetation.
Once again, it looks like we're just having a little internet. Shall we go ahead and move on to early oral communications, Mayor?
Several road trails.
All right, go ahead. You'll have to unmute yourself, Mayor, and then we can go ahead and move on to early oral communications.
Were there any public comments submitted on the side?
Yes, there was one public comment submitted by Daryl Pauline. Are we going to be using the timer tonight?
Oh, no, what I meant is specifically on the Forest Management Committee.
No, there were no public comments on that item.
Right, so next, which is, I think what you were referring to, is early oral communications. This time is provided for people to address the council or submit written communications on matters not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral and written communications, the council may respond to statements. Any request that requires council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. All other oral and written communications will be heard at this meeting under Agenda Item 11. So you said that there was one submission from from Mr. Pauline.
Yes, we have one submission under this item. I will go ahead and read that. "I have lived in downtown Arcata since 2005. I have enjoyed my time here in this quiet, small town, which is also enjoyably boisterous at times. There have been difficult times over the years. Heroin, methamphetamine, black market cannabis trade, and the ripples of the Occupy movement have all contributed negatively as they swept through town. I have had hope that Arcata is nonetheless improving as the years go by. However, when the shelter-in-place order was implemented, people began arriving in Arcata who have made life challenging for me, and I am sure for many of my neighbors. I have always spent much of my time at my home near the plaza, and so the shelter-in-place order has not drastically changed my vantage point. So I think that I have a somewhat objective understanding of my neighborhood and how it has changed. New homeless people have been arriving every day. Many of them behave in an antisocial manner. Many are aggressive and have threatened me with no provocation on my part. Many throw trash about. Many more of them curse loudly and make threats to imaginary people. Many of them drink and do drugs in the streets and parking lots. While most people have been staying at home in the evenings for the last two months, the heart of Arcata has been occupied by the houseless, many of whom are using drugs or mentally ill. Two parking lots have been offered by the city for tent camping. I understand the intention is to provide the houseless the opportunity to socially distance for the purpose of reducing the spread of COVID-19. However, the tent camping areas have insufficient space for the entire population of homeless that continues to immigrate to Arcata. The two blocks of city in between the camping areas are also occupied by the houseless. Many sleep in cars and vans on the streets in the parking lot at 8th Street and F Street, halfway between the other two lots. They also sleep in tents crowded onto grassy areas or on sidewalks or in entryways of buildings. The parking lot at the Portland Lou generally contains a few vehicles with groups of boisterous partiers. On big nights, the party stretches up and down F Street. Twice I have seen young children at the scene. I estimate there can be 100 homeless people just in the six-block area from 7th to 10th Street and G to E Street. Many people who do not reside in the tent shelters nonetheless travel in and out of the camping areas that are intended to provide the opportunity to socially distance. Please understand that I see the great majority of this population are law-abiding and our good neighbors. However, the camps are minimally supervised, and a few bad apples can take advantage of the opportunity to cause trouble and take advantage of the most vulnerable amongst them. Meanwhile, many of those outside the camping areas behave antisocially with impunity as they wait for their three daily meals and other services. The police blotter is chock full of bites and drunken public charges in the orbit of these campgrounds/service centers."
If there is more, you can read that under Agenda Item 11.
Okay, we will do that.
Right, were there any other public comments submitted? Under this item?
There were no other comments submitted under this item.
Next is Item 11, Consent Calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. A, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of May 20, 2020. B, biweekly report on general warrants. C, award a construction contract for the 2020 asphalt grindout and inlay project rebid for Mercer Fraser Company in the amount of $299,624.50. Authorize the city engineer to increase the contract amount by up to $29,962.45, which is 10% for a total of $329,586.95 to allow for any unforeseen contingencies and additional paving work as necessary, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. D, adopt Resolution Number 190-74 authorizing the destruction of certain city records from the Community Development Department as permitted under Section 34090 of the California Government Code and the Secretary of State's Local Government Records Program. He authorized a grant agreement with the Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $40,000 for the Arcata Place Center, and authorized the city manager sign all documents as declare a continuation of the local emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic. Would any member of the council like to remove an item? Sing that, and was there a request from any member of the public to remove an item?
No, there were not.
I may have a motion for the consent calendar.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Watson.
Hi.
Councilmember Pereira.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Patino.
I.
And Mayor Winkler.
Hi.
Unanimous.
All right. And next is conduct a public hearing to hear objections or protests from landowners listed on the attached report of 2019 delinquent garbage account fees, and make revisions or corrections to the report as the council deems just, after which adopt Resolution Number 190-75, confirming the report of the 2019 delinquent garbage counties. May I have a staff report, please, from Director Andre?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Yes, this is an annual report we do to you, and we recommend you open the public hearing to hear objections or protests from landowners that are on the attached list of delinquent 2019 garbage accounts and the fees that are associated with those. Make revisions or corrections to the report as the council deems. Make revisions or corrections to the report as the council deems. Just and after which adopt resolution 19075 confirming the report of 2019 for delinquent garbage account fees. Arcata Municipal Code, Sentation Health, Chapter 3, Solid Waste. Section 5470 defines bills not paid within 60 days. After billing of the billing date to be late and deemed delinquent. That same section 5470 allows the city to collect payment for delinquent accounts pursuant to the authority granted in government code. Through 8790. Point one in a manner described in government code 25831. Pursuant to that process, the city reviews and confirms a report of delinquent accounts during a public hearing. At which time affected property owners may present objections or protests. The council may revise the report and the list as appropriate prior to taking action to confirm it. After this action, a certified copy of the confirmed report of delinquent accounts is then filed with the county auditor. I believe it then goes to the. It gets reported and liens are created and attached to the property. So that's, that's the process. The attached list. Is provided with the staff reports. I think it totals. Currently $15,670. Which is actually less than previous years of delinquent garbage outstanding totals. Recology Arcata sends letters, late notice letters, I should say, to all these past due account holders. Bi-monthly for commercial and monthly for residential accounts to try to collect on the late fees. And also a letter, a sample letter is attached to the staff report signed by. Deputy Director Julie Neander. And. That does, that does shrink the list before it comes to the city council. Accounts that pay prior to July 31st, 2020 will be removed from the delinquent accounts list. But that concludes the report. This is exempt from CEQA. There's a budget impact, you know, if we don't proceed here of $15,670 as I mentioned and. This process is a lot simpler for the city rather than spending. Many months trying to chase down delinquent bills that Recology Arcata has not been able to collect on. So it's the most efficient way. So with that, if there's any questions. I would recommend that you, you know, hear, hear any protests or objections from, from the. Community tonight. I don't have a list that was provided. Prior to this meeting, I know Deputy Director Neander is on too. So I'll turn it over to her for a moment to make sure that we're. Our list is the same as the staff report. Date when we filed this report. On May 27. Julie, are you there?
I am here. Can people hear me? I for some reason can't put a video on.
Yeah, I can hear you Julie.
Okay, great. I apologize about that. We did get some calls from people and we walked them through the process and I think people have been contacting Recology and trying to pay their bills. But I didn't get any protests from anyone who received the letter. When I spoke to them, I maybe got about eight calls total.
All right, I will now ask for questions for the council by roll call. Councilmember Pereira.
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Watson.
No questions, thank you.
Vice Mayor Patino.
Yeah, I have a question. One thing, you know, we got this draft letter. And I, I just grabbed it and looked at it and I thought, well, let's see, let's find that account in this list. And it's like, well, the draft letter is not in the list. So I didn't understand that exactly, but it's a draft and. It evidently doesn't have to do with this list. Um, that's one. The other thing is. The county processes this for free? For us, or did they charge us?
That's, that's a good, that's a good question. I could, the next, next council meeting, I can tell you that exact thing, how that works for the stormwater. But for the delinquent, I'm trying to recall.
Andrea, do you have an update on that?
Yes, they do. So just for the first question from Paul, we did include. I believe in that staff report, there is a draft letter. Historically, we've included just a blank copy. To demonstrate what a typical delinquent garbage holder would receive from ecology on our state of Arcata letterhead. So it doesn't tie into any particular account on the delinquent garbage listing.
Thank you. I just need your, looked at the parcel number. I looked at the parcel numbers in the list and I thought. Well, it's not there. So sorry, I get what it's about. It's just my own eccentricity there. But the cost, the cost from the county, the reason I'm asking is. If we're get, if we have costs from the county, they should be passed on to. These people and recology.
So that's a great point. We do have costs associated with change, changes to the assessment role. So if we had to remove one of those parcel listings. I believe there is a $5 charge after the property tax bills go out. And then there are fees for collection as well. In the last year, we've collected close to $12,000 in delinquent garbage. On the property tax rolls and our fees have been, I would say ballpark about $1,500 in total. So there are fees associated with sending that along to have the property taxes collected through the, or they have special assessments collected through the county.
And so that $1,500 was somehow reflected back to the customer?
So. Yep. So we're basically collecting, we send, say we sent a $10,000 amount to the county. Over the course of the year, they charge fees. What we end up getting back, they'll just deduct the fees automatically from what they provide to us in the form of a check or ACH. As far as passing those fees along, I might defer to Mark or Julie as far as having that conversation with Recology. For those delinquent accounts we're collecting on.
And maybe I'll just chime in Andrea. Historically, what's happened is that they do get penalties assessed to those bills. So the bills themselves are, you know, a tad inflated either by three or five or seven percent, depending on how long, you know, that delinquency goes. So some of that is recollected that way. But one of the things that we have found is that this is one, a much quicker way to recoup cost. And it's much less expensive for the city than actually sending them through collections. I mean, we can add fees to collections too. But at the same time, we've just found that collections is not nearly as effective. As this as a method of retrieval, which we can do for the garbage bills.
But is there, is there any way that we can? I mean, the county is charging us a fee. Somehow it's deducted from what we get. So is there some way of recouping that from the customer? That if we have to do this, it costs an extra 10 bucks or whatever.
That, that assessment goes on before it gets turned to the county. Yeah, we can look in and make sure that the assessments, the penalty charges that are assessed to that bill before it goes to the county. In essence, recoup the cost that the county charges us.
Okay.
You can't say it's direct, but we can analyze that and see how direct that correlation is.
Sure. Thanks a lot.
I just want to add Paul, the fees that we collect actually go back to recology because they're the fees for that service that people didn't pay. So it, it isn't, we would have to pay recology if these fees were not collected and paid to recology.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just saying if the county, if we say we're delinquent, $15,000 and the county says, fine. Here's 14 for you. The other thousand, you got to pay to recology. On, it's like, well, we shouldn't have to pay. It should go directly to the customer. Am I making myself clear?
That's, that's clear to me. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
You're just, you're just, you're saying the city should be made whole on, on this and not have to subsidize that extra.
Yeah, yeah, we don't, we. Recology wants the whole amount. They don't want a deducted amount.
I agree with Councilmember Patino.
What's that?
I agree with you.
Thank you.
I have no questions. I will now take public comments. And so are there any comments from the public on this item that would be ready to the record?
There were no public comments submitted under this agenda item.
So I'm going to take final comments from the council. So Vice Mayor Patino.
I'm ready to make a motion. Should I just go ahead and do that?
Well, I'll just take comments from the other council members first and then you can make your motion. So Councilmember Pereira.
Whenever a motion is made, I will support it.
And Councilmember Watson, any comments?
Uh, no, that, you know, just that I think Councilmember Patino had a, had a valid point. That's my only comment right now.
And I also feel that Councilmember or Vice Mayor Patino had a valid point. So go ahead and make your motion.
Yeah, so I'll move that we adopt resolution number 19075 confirming the report of 2019 delinquent garbage account fees.
Okay.
Right, I will then poll the council on this motion. So Vice Mayor Patino.
Yes.
Councilmember Pereira.
Hi.
And Councilmember Watson?
Yes.
And I vote aye. Right. Next is, is a item suggested by Councilmember Watson. Consider an Arcata Economic Recovery Collaborative. Relative to COVID-19. And. As I said, Councilmember Watson has expressed an interest in identifying a subcommittee of the city council to bring together a local economic recovery. Collaborative that will assist the city and local businesses, nonprofits to rebuild from the economic impacts of COVID-19. So could you go ahead and. Describe what you are thinking of on this?
Yeah. Well, something I saw Governor Newsom put together a, a group to work on the recovery and I was inspired by that. And just kind of beg the question if it made sense to do something. That was, you know, very specific to Arcata. And try to coordinate that with what's going on at a, you know, countywide and. Regionally, maybe try countywide and then to the state. So, you know, I guess what, right now, what I think is it would be beneficial. If. You know, at least a, a single meeting was held by. You know, maybe a subcommittee, council members, the city manager. You know, perhaps a representative from Main Street or representative from the chamber. And just, you know, kind of have that conversation and, and feel out if there is a role to play for. A Arcata specific group. And then in addition to that, there are. Meetings right now, weekly, that the executive director of the Redwood Region Economic Development Commission, Greg Foster, is leading. And so myself and the city manager have. Just gotten involved with those and so we'll be staying regularly up to date with what's going on in the countywide conversation about recovery. And. So, yeah, just to, you know, basically consider. You know, make sure that this is something the council's okay with us working on and. The, you know, one thing we've talked about as well is. The desire for some local businesses to do outdoor seating to really try to help the restaurants. Get going again. And I know that our staff has identified, you know, a significant barrier to that. And I'll go ahead and let city manager Deaner. Explain the details of that. But, you know, it's basically the gist of it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Watson. What Councilmember Watson was referring to is that after the last council meeting. When you requested that we'd look into either the closure of Eighth Street or Eighth and Ninth Street or any other public spaces that might be a benefit to expand outdoor seating or vending areas. To try to spur economic recovery. Staff has found that in our land use code, we do have some particular guidelines around outdoor. Sales and outdoor dining. So I'm going to go ahead and just share the screen quick to show you. What this looks like. That was. Not what I wanted to share. Pull it up. Well, that is the version we are going to share, I think, because I don't know where the other version went. So in our land use code. Under the provision of permanent outdoor displays or sales, but anything really other than very temporary, such as special event permits. For outdoor displays and sales, anything that would be in a setback zone or anything that doesn't meet, you know, certain criteria, basically with on your private property. Still does require a minor use permit for approval. Actually, that's where no setback area is required. And if you get down to the outdoor dining areas, the outdoor dining, any outdoor eating area within the public right of way would require a design review permit. And an encroachment permit. Certainly, these outdoor dining sites would require an encroachment permit and we would need to ensure that we had. Ingress and egress and ADA accessibility around them. But some of, you know, the standards right now in our land use code could be a pretty significant time barrier for us to be able to get some of these programs. Up and running if there are businesses that feel like they can staff up and take advantage of expanding their business opportunities that way. So the staff has suggested just come up with. An option for the council that you could consider tonight, or we could hold over to either a special meeting or the next meeting. But the proposed request to the council would basically be to authorize the city manager to suspend and or modify the requirements. Of our land use code, section 942140, the outdoor retail and dining display sales sections. And then to determine that any other provisions or standards of the land use code that would be in conflict with the suspension or modification. Would be superseded by this action, that this action is consistent and enforceable under our city's emergency declaration and resolution. That it is exempt from CEQA as an emergency project and just a minor alteration to the land use. And then direct staff to develop kind of a streamlined process for the onsite and the right-of-way encroachment. For outdoor retail dining displays and sales. So I will say that we are pretty close to putting, you know, kind of a simple packet together that would be available. Starting, you know, with restaurants in the downtown area. We've consulted with the city of Eureka, with the fire marshal, the building official here. And engineering department is just about ready to finalize that packet. We certainly would send that packet out to the city council. But it would require us to go in and make some modifications. To the section of the land use code. So if that was something, again, it's, you know, it's not something that, you know, will be immediate within 24 hours based in this emergency. But it is potentially a program that we could start to roll out next week. If the council was comfortable with authorizing myself to make those suspensions or modifications tonight. Or we certainly could bring it back as a complete package and have you look at it at that point. So we just thought we'd share that as, as one thing that came up as we started to look at that recovery. With that, I will take questions.
Right, I'll ask questions by, by roll call. So. Councilmember Pereira, any questions or comments on the, the original proposal or the extension of the proposal by city manager Deaner?
I heard Councilmember Watson sounded like you wanted to chime in.
Oh, I was just going to say, I mean, I felt like everything that the, the staff has put together there makes sense to me. I don't see the harm. In expediting it as much as we can right now, just to show our support. And. Yeah, I mean, I, I think it would be a good thing for us to do. That would be greatly appreciated.
Sophia, do you want to go and make it?
I just wanted to make sure he had an opportunity to speak since this is an item that he's brought forward in terms of the economic recovery collaborative. Um, yeah, I fully support, you know, if there's another colleague on the council that wants to, to work on, on this. It looks like a lot of. The tasks that are kind of outlined in the stat. the tasks that are kind of outlined in the staff report are really things that are being managed at a county level. So I think just, I think council member Watson, how you brought up, you know, the work that you're doing with redeck and to just make sure that, you know, this work is really just in line with those efforts that are happening around the, you know, business reopening guidance that's coming from the Emergency Operations Center, you know, job market and EDD are doing a lot of work locally around, um, you know, assisting displaced workers. Um, so there's lots of really valuable things that are happening at the county level that I know many of you are aware of. So I think just as long as, um, you know, that work at an Arcata level is just being really connected to those efforts, I think that that all sounds really good. And then I would absolutely support us moving forward tonight. What's been proposed by staff so that we can get moving on providing these opportunities, assuming that these are businesses that have passed the the certification process with the county. I want to be really clear that there is a process for businesses to go through. And so if they're complying with that, I think we want to be accommodating as much as possible and support safe social distancing and using our businesses that are part of that process.
Right. Vice Mayor Patino, comments or questions on the extended proposal?
I fully support the whole thing. As soon as we can get it going, let's do it. Thank you.
And I support this also. So, um, Karen, do we need two separate motions? Because it sounds like the opening up the the businesses, restaurants on the sidewalks. It sounds like it's a separate proposal from formation of a subcommittee.
Yeah, I think two separate motions would be appropriate tonight, Mayor.
Right. So since you initiated this, that you can, you or another council member can make the motion.
Yeah, do we? I just want to, yeah. So I'll say, I was gonna say, do you want to take public comment, but I can make the motion quickly. You know, I move that we move forward with the Economic Recovery Collaborative, as outlined in agenda item B, with a up to two council members, the city manager, and additional participation as the city manager deems necessary by other groups.
Can I see if we have interest from council members in being on this subcommittee? And then you could include that in your in your motion?
So if and if no one's interested, I don't mind just doing it. But if someone else is interested, great. So the yes, Paul?
Well, I was sorry, I was listening for somebody else. If there's nobody else, I'll do it.
Okay, so then I will revise my motion to create the Economic Recovery Collaborative with council member Pati, or I'm sorry, excuse me, excuse me, Vice Mayor Patino, I'm sorry, with Vice Mayor Patino, council member Watson, city manager Deemer, and additional attendees as the city manager chooses.
Right. Do we have, do we have any public comments on this item?
There were no public comments submitted under this agenda item.
All right. So I will do a polling, a roll call vote on this. So, um, council member Watson?
All right.
Council member prayer.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Patino?
I.
And I vote I. All right. And then the second part of it has to do with modifications proposed by staff as far as restaurants on the sidewalk and and emergency actions on that.
I'll make a motion, but in order to read the motion, I would need to see the the language. If you'd be willing to put that back on, it's going to be a long motion. Okay, so I'll move to authorize the city manager to suspend and or modify the requirements of nine four two one hundred and forty, outdoor retail and dining displays and sales. Authorize city manager to determine that any other, excuse me, determine that any other provision, standard, or process in the land use code that is in conflict with the suspension is superseded by this action. Finds that this action is consistent with and enforceable under the city's emergency declaration. Finds the action exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to the SEQA guidelines, one five two six nine C, emergency projects, and section one five three zero five, minor alterations in land use limitations, and section one five three one one, accessory structures, and direct staff to develop a streamlined process for onsite and right of way encroachment for outdoor retail and dining displays and sales.
Second.
All right, I will do a roll call vote on this. So Vice Mayor Patino?
I.
Council member Pereira?
Hi.
Council member Watson? And I vote I myself. So that is it on the side. And now on to item number eleven. So do we, we have the continuation of the comment from Mr. Pauline? And could you go ahead and read the remainder of Mr. Pauline's comment?
Yes, Mayor. The jail in Eureka has chosen to not provide much help for keeping problem individuals out of our communities at this time. And so those who are arrested come back to Arcata quickly to reoffend. I have some understanding of the national and statewide failings that are contributing to such a miserable scene. Changes need to be made to the affordability of housing, to the reformation of prisons and jails, and to the mental health system. The city of Arcata, partnering with Arcata House, have both generously attempted to provide for those in need. I am in awe of the enormity of that generosity. However, this generosity is an attraction for a growing immigration of homeless people with many different needs. I am feeling overwhelmed with the weight of these needs. We all have different capacities for generosity and tolerance. I would ask the city council and Arcata House to respect the limits of Arcata's capacity to solve all of the ills of the world. I would also like to invite all of you who have not frequented downtown Arcata for the past weeks to grab your face masks and come down to this area on a Friday or Saturday evening. You can walk from Seventh and G up to the plaza, turn right towards the Portland Lou, continue around the ballpark and through the bus station. You may see drunk people hollering obscenely, people passed out on the sidewalk surrounded by trash, or a group passing around a bowl and a bottle of whiskey amongst the fifty tents and many live-in vehicles. You may even spot in this environment a homeless six-year-old child playing. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Daryl Pauline. There were no other public comments submitted under this agenda item.
So any comments from staff in relation to Mr. Pauline's submission? Or from members of the council?
I can just share that, you know, we have met with Arcata House Partnership. When we do receive complaints, either myself or the chief have been working with, you know, neighbors of either of the sites to try to alleviate those. We did meet as a group with Arcata House Partnership in the county today to talk through some additional measures that we could take around, you know, security. And and so we'll continue to work through those. I mean, we do recognize that these are temporary stations. So we are also working hard to start on that transition plan as we need to reopen those parking lots and be able to transition folks through into other sheltering and housing options. And so that planning effort will come forth to the council, you know, sometime here in June. But we are starting to work on those plans as well. So overall, I mean, I still think that they have been very successful. I will say that, you know, I do see an increase of interest in them. And so I do think that we, you know, do have some additional folks just as we get into June and kind of our standard traveling months that we're seeing additional people come in to the town and and they're seeing that this could potentially be a service. At this point, both sites are full. Arcata House Partnership is not allowing any additional tents to be set up, and we will start to work with those that we have sheltering in those locations for longer term alternatives as we move forward. But I don't have a perfect timeline laid out, you know. But we will ultimately get that to the council here as it is is developed.
See, how has your communication been with Mr. Pauline on this on this subject?
It's been with Mr. Pauline, has mostly been via email, and I'd have to check with the chief. I don't know if he's reached out and talked with him directly. But we can, you know, we can continue to reach out with him and on specific individuals as well. For the most part, we do have a lot of neighbors of this site that have actually been very supportive as well. I think they, they, for the most part, have been very well managed and have had very few calls for service to the police department. But individuals, if they do hear, you know, something that makes them uncomfortable, should immediately call nine one one and I, you know, and the police will respond. And then we might be able to address it with that particular individual, I think, as his letter indicates. There's a couple of folks that come through town or that may be associated with the sites that cause trouble. My understanding is that there's only been one tent site that has been asked to leave during this whole period. So I think the behavior of those that are sheltering in place in those locations has been really pretty positive. But Chief, am I missing anything?
No, ma'am. Most of my communication with Mr. Pauline has been via email. We have spoken over the phone. And his, his passion for Arcata and the message that he has been consistent on is very consistent with his public comment tonight. So he does appreciate what Arcata House Partnership and the city of Arcata and the county have done for those who are unsheltered. But he, like others, are also looking forward to seeing, you know, what kinds of transition takes place here in the next, you know, several months.
All right. Next is council and staff reports. So
Michael, Michael, I had a question.
Okay.
You know, um, have we got any input or interest from the city of Eureka, county of Humboldt, for unincorporated areas like McKinleyville and whatever, to set up a tip campground modeled after ours? I mean, is anybody else interested in doing this? Since we've been, we've had it up for a while. It's, it's not like it's, we just did it. So there's been plenty of time for people to look at it and say, yeah, we can do that in McKinleyville or Roaner, Roanerville, or wherever, Fortuna, Eureka. I just wonder if there is any interest and what can we do to help them? Help us with this.
Your Vice Mayor Patino, I can only speak from the police perspective, if I may. It was about, I would say, a week and a half ago. There were two representatives from the Eureka Police Department who walked both sites with both myself and members of Arcata House Partnership. They had a genuine interest in exploring how these temporary emergency shelter locations were working for Arcata and mostly for those who are unsheltered. They didn't share necessarily what their ultimate goal was, or if they thought that it was viable for the city of Eureka, but to have them actually come to the city and and walk with us and and exchange ideas and really listen to how valuable, you know, these sites have been, you know, for people who are in need of services. They just seem to be genuinely interested, but I think they still had quite a bit of vetting and analysis to do as to whether or not it would, it would be viable for Eureka. But in terms of any other areas of Humboldt County, only the city of Eureka has actually met personally with both Arcata House Partnership and the police department.
Thanks, Brian. That is a move from what the original statement from a police department in Eureka was in the beginning of that was an absolute no. Um, so maybe they're softening up and who knows, they might get one before the whole event is over. So thanks for your help, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, we'll have to unmute you here just a second. Okay, you are good to go.
Right. So any, any comments, further comments from council on this email from Mr. Pauline? All right. Next is oral communications. Let's see. Which we did, and council and staff reports is next. And so we can start with staff. So any reports from staff?
No reports from staff this evening, other than, you know, we had a very successful distribution of food today at the community center between two thirty and four thirty in partnership with Food for People. I haven't received a final number, but I'll get that out to the council tomorrow once it comes in. So it was a beautiful day for it, and things went really smoothly. Appreciation to our recreation staff, Mike Grace, who's been assisting with senior mail delivery throughout the entire COVID period with the Arcata, you know, lunch program, and then the police department, and then we were able to call back our volunteer patrol to assist with traffic control today, too, which I think they were excited about to be back working a little bit and volunteering a little bit, and it really helped with the with the event today. So and of course, our appreciation to Food for People for bringing that distribution north here to Arcata.
All right. Next is council reports. So let's see, council member Watson, any, any comments?
I'll just report that on Monday, I attended the rally in front of the Eureka Police Department with city manager Deemer and chief Aaron. I think overall, the, you know, it was a good back and forth conversation, you know, with different viewpoints, and it was peaceful. And later that afternoon, with city manager, Deemer also attended the rallies around Arcata, which I would also say went well, and I would describe as as peaceful. So it was, you know, good to see people out peacefully exercising their rights.
Right. That council member Pereira, any, any reports?
Yeah, I just wanted to share a few thoughts. I think after, after this weekend, the protests that we saw across the country and in our own community that were overwhelmingly peaceful. You know, we did see, you know, someone, just even in Eureka, use their vehicle to, you know, assault protesters. So I'm glad that the Eureka PD is looking into that. But but overwhelmingly, I'm just grateful that people are speaking out about racial injustice. And in Arcata, I know we've been talking about racism, not only, you know, just within Arcata, but as a county, as a region, what we can be doing. And I think this is just a reminder that we can't be complacent in that work. I know we have Equity Arcata that's doing really important work. There's lots of really great organizations locally that are doing organizing around racial justice and racial equity work. And so I've been just really reflecting a lot and just doing research on what, you know, what can, you know, folks that want to be allies, can, what can you be doing right now? And so donating to organizations is one way that people can support. If they want to support locally, there's organizations like Black Humboldt, the Eureka N double A C P, there's Tree North Organizing Network, we have Equity Arcata. So those are local organizations that's not exhaustive, but those are ideas if folks are thinking about how they can contribute to local organizations that are doing work around this. And that's a good place to start. Black Humboldt also has a list on their website of black owned businesses. If folks want to spend their dollars there as well. I think really just the, a message that I've really heard loud and clear that I just want to share is that really it's it's better to try than than to be silent. So even though we may, you know, say something and we misspeak, or don't say it in a way that goes smoothly, and we get feedback saying, you know, we didn't say it the right way, that it's better to say something than nothing at all. And I think that's just a reminder for us as we move forward. I know that these conversations aren't new to us in Arcata, but I think it just shows that we still have a long ways to go. We're not where we need to be. So I'm grateful for people coming together, although I will admit with COVID nineteen, I'm worried about people's safety, and I hope people continue to be safe and social distance however they can. But those were just some of my thoughts. I also did want to bring up, we do have the work that our police department is doing in response to the Police Foundation recommendations, things that were, you know, improvements that were happening in response to the Police Foundation recommendations, things that were, you know, improvements that were happening prior to the Police Foundation report, but also work that's happening in response to that report. And I know we have that report on our website. But I actually just wanted to check with staff, do we have, we had that really great presentation that Chief Ahern did that gave an update of the progress. Do we have that report on the website along with the Police Foundation report?
I just happened to look for those today as I was pulling together some information. So we are uploading, there's two, two written updates that the chief has provided to the council. And then we will work to, to also link to the city council meeting. So they are as part of the agenda packet on our website. But we're going to add them into that page as well as a link to where they could see the audio recording of the updates as well.
Perfect. Now, I think that's great because I think, I think the, you know, if the community ever has a question, it's, it's an easy thing that we can refer people to of updates, not only, you know, showing the report, which I think is an incredibly important document for folks to look at, but to then see what have we done with it? Where, where are we going with those recommendations? And I know that there's a lot of work happening. So I think the more we can amplify that work and, and share that with folks, I think that will help a lot too. So, thank you.
Right, Vice Mayor Patino?
Yeah, um, you know, the, the protest that we had at 3:33 on Monday, the, the protest parade, et cetera, was really good. And I really appreciate there not being any visible police around. It allowed the protesters to be responsible and monitor themselves, which they did pretty well. I also noticed that because I'm on HDA board, I'm always watching whenever I see the bus. And I thought I saw this giant RTS bus trying to get through. And I noticed he immediately put on his emergency flashers, slowed down, kept good distance. And so I, I reported that to the director today that it's really important during the time where you have the protests that the buses really monitor themselves and the emergency flashers really help. The, the, today we had a call in with Jared Huffman. Kind of, he calls it a lunch hour thing, happens every couple of weeks or so. And there's really not many people there, so you get a lot of one-on-one time with them. And I said, you know, one thing that I, I want to look at as a council, what can we do concretely? How can we set an example or, yeah, set an example so other people will follow us? Especially around police violence, whatever's going on today. And I thought it would be great. I said, Jared, do you have a list of the police departments in the US somehow? And who has the chokehold and who don't? Who has required implicit bias and racial sensitivity training and who doesn't? I mean, it would be great to put that out there so we could see where are we in the world? And, and while I'm saying that, I'm thinking, I'm hoping we don't have chokehold. I seem to remember it leaving sometime in the past. But I would be walking on my tongue if we still have it. And I hope that that doesn't exist. So I guess that's a question for the chief.
Yes, sir. You know, it's interesting and good timing. Both the mayor, well, the mayor actually received an email from a community member tonight that was forwarded to me and I, and I appreciate that. And it has to deal with Campaign Zero. There's really eight elements of Campaign Zero. One of them is to ban chokeholds and strangleholds. In fact, it was President Obama hosted a virtual town hall earlier today. And I happened to be able to watch probably maybe about 20 minutes of the president's comments. And then right afterwards, they transitioned to another speaker. But the person narrating was talking about Campaign Zero and actually, you know, went so far as to say that, you know, they, they're, you know, they're going to post the list of cities, you know, that are in support of, you know, the Campaign Zero philosophy and my brother's keepers communities. And so, you know, I, I, you know, there, there are, there are certain perspectives, interpretations of what a chokehold is versus a stranglehold. We don't use a chokehold. A chokehold, you know, is, is you're talking about choking somebody. There is a, there is, there are techniques that are taught at the basic academy and they're post-approved and, and, you know, and, and we do have a post-basic academy. And in, and as such, we are required at College of the Redwoods to be in compliance with all other 35, roughly 35 basic police academies throughout the state to at least deliver the curriculum that post requires. And as I alluded to in the email, and the mayor will, will see it when he gets an opportunity is that I, I wouldn't be surprised if not just in the state, but in the western region or throughout the country is that similar to other police reforms, is that there's going to be more continuity nationwide. Because you're seeing how, you know, a, an event, a murder while in the custody of, of a police department in the Midwest, how that impacts lives throughout our country. So I, I, we have work to do in Arcata, there's no doubt. And our commitment is to be in alignment with what the direction we receive from all of you as a city council. And that's what we're going to do. I know no one wants to compromise the safety of anyone in this equation, but we have a lot of tools. You've been very gracious to us over the years, very generous. We have the tools, we have the training. There are techniques that have been taught over the years that simply are no longer needed. So, you know, as we move through this pain and as we continue to grow, and I really appreciate Councilmember Pereira's comments about, you know, say something, even if it doesn't come out right. I find myself doing that all of the time, especially in Equity Arcata. You know, you talk about learning and growing. And I just, I am learning how to say things the proper way. And, and I think, you know, how we utilize force options, you know, to do things the right way, the humane way. For example, your authority, your authorization for us to purchase a mobile option simulator, bringing state-of-the-art technology to Arcata, you know, to give our officers and our community members the tools that we need to de-escalate situations and come to a safe resolution while minimizing the opportunity for people to be injured. So that's our commitment moving forward. And I'm looking forward to working with all of you to make sure that we are setting the example here in Arcata. If it's not about size, it's about commitment. And in my Facebook Live interview with Channel 3 last Sunday, I think it was, we talked exactly about that is follow Arcata. We'll teach you how to police anywhere in this country.
Well, great. Thanks, Brian. I, I'm going to roll back to, can we get our name on the Campaign Zero list? Are, are you waiting for us to approve something so we get on there right away and start the ball rolling?
You know what, Vice Mayor Patino, you know, I work for all of you. So I, I will, I think, you know, the mayor has that information. And I, I'll defer to the city manager in terms of, you know, the, the actual mechanics of this. But, you know, you have a police chief that's fully committed to these principles. And, and we will move forward at your direction or if that direction is right now, well then consider us moving forward.
Yeah, I don't know if we can direct you right now, but maybe next meeting, huh?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I guess I hear you're just suggesting a, an agenda item for our next meeting around these new principles.
Thanks for translating.
I was grateful to the community member who sent me the information on Campaign Zero and, and the, obviously, the actions by the police officer in Minnesota were reckless and resulted in the murder of George Floyd. And I was grateful to see that the, the chokeholds and other actions by the police officer are specifically forbidden by Campaign Zero. So that's, I thought it was important to immediately forward it to Chief Ahern. And so I, I very much would like that to be on the agenda for our next meeting. And I have, I have nothing else to report. We have one day future meeting. We have an annual study session with the Planning Commission scheduled for Thursday, June 25th at 6:00 PM. And we had a closed session on May 27th, reporting on conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code 54957.6. And we had nothing to report out from that. And with the approval of, of the council, that I would like to adjourn the meeting in honor of George Floyd and, and just expressing our deep sorrow for the murder by the police officer and the impact on the communities and, and the impact on Mr. Floyd's family. So with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.